Meeting to order. And Paul, you're on reading the regulations.
According to the governor's order, certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel virus outbreak emergency, the October 13th, 2020 public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public conversation. Alternative public access to this meeting will be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised via Falmouth Community Television. Two, real time public comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. Application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate point in the meeting. Zoom login instructions. Instructions in the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found falmouthmatt.us backslash one, one, two backslash planning board. Please allow, please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of preparation for login. So it may be less if you've used device you'll be using to access the meeting. Applicants, representatives and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board appear remotely in our applicants, representatives and individuals with enforcement matters before the planning board may contact the planning department to arrange the kind of means of real time participation if unable to use the Zoom virtual meeting software. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations should be submitted in advance to the meeting to planning@falmouthma.gov that they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Pat, you mute?
You guys have to remember to unmute yourselves before speaking.
I'm trying to unmute myself. Now I did it. It was hard. Pat, you're muted. Tom, you got muted by Tom Cox or somebody administratively muted you.
All right. I didn't do it myself.
No, that's why we gotta, you know.
Paul?
Yes.
Minutes, September 29.
I reckon approval in September 29, 2020 has corrected.
There is second? Second? Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay, everybody has approved of that. We go on to approval not required. Applicant, McSweeney Companies, Inc., Barbara A., David M., James R. and Peter S. Marshall. Plan of land to adjust the boundary between two parcels of land located at 711 Palmer Avenue. Map number is 3503001000A and 3505002000. I think you all have had the plans. Tom, would you like to go into a brief discussion of this? Description of it. Tom, you're muted.
Thank you. I've got about 14 screens open in the background there as I was scrolling through things. So we have an A and R plan for the Palmer lot. It is essentially on the public way. It's paved. There is adequate frontage for the lot. The fact that we take a triangular lot and through this process make it into a six sided lot is allowable under the town's regulations. Because the only thing that really takes play with these is their frontage on the way. So there is proper frontage on a public way that is improved and is a fine for endorsement from my perspective. Got pictures if you'd like to have them on the screen.
Does anybody have any questions about this A and R?
Nope.
Jim?
I think we should at least show it on the screen for a minute.
Okay.
We can do that. So here you see the, the A and R plan as submitted, the original, I'm going to zoom in here for you a bit. Cause that makes it easier to see things. All right. So the existing lot is this triangle that we see. That we see here with the Z line to here and essentially they're taking making this diagonal vertical, horizontal, and then back to the rest of the triangle.
Paul?
Yeah, I noticed with interest, the existing plot plan shows the house at 703 over the property line. I'm curious why they don't correct that property line at the same time they do any other.
Hey again, Paul.
What are the existing? Can you do that?
I'm going to bring that existing plan up just a second, please.
Please.
And this is the nature of Mr. Dyer's question, I would assume, is that this structure here, that's around your faces on the screen here so I can see what I'm doing as well. So Mr. Dyer's question about this structure that appears to be over the lot line here. Mind that while our DIS is really good, it doesn't necessarily 100% nail where that structure is in relationship to the property line. May or may not be over the property line. Yes, I got it.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? All right. Could I have a motion? To approve this A and R without regard to billability, et cetera?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
They moved and seconded. And if there are any further discussion on it? If not, please show yes approval by raising your hand. Okay, all seven of us approve. Okay? We move on to determination of access. Lewis Neck Road map number 4003001B000B. William Fender. And I believe we have, do you want to say something first, Tom, on this and then?
Yeah, I'm going to talk through the screen since I didn't get a chance to email Thomas and Michaela about promoting Jackie Fender and Mike Borselli as the applicants. So thank you very much, Madam Chair. So prior to me leaving, I was working on a brief memo for the board describing this is our first determination of access policy. I finished it up earlier today and forwarded back to, to the board. So once again, apologies for those occasional late breaking information. However, I don't anticipate the board is going to be closing the discussion tonight. This being our inaugural determination of access. So with addition to my memo, I sent the, the policy that the board had voted back in April of, you know, 2020. So the planning board is conducting their first determinative access on Mr. Fender's property on Lewis Neck Road. As previously discussed, Lewis Neck Road doesn't meet those basic components of the policy large part due to the narrowness of Lewis Neck Road, which is 12 plus or minus feet width wide. Also, as previously discussed, the board had approved the determination of access for Falmouth Housing Trust. It required them to cut vegetation 18 feet in width, which they were not able to do without Mr. Fender's assistance. Those trees, those shrubs and things like that were on private property. They weren't controlled by the Falmouth Housing Trust. Mr. Fender has been working at this for a while, knowing the folks who live on the street and their desire to pave the road. They granted Mr. Fender permission to remove those trees that allowed both the Falmouth Housing Trust and one of Mr. Fender's lots to achieve that access for fire equipment and that 18 feet wide and 13 feet high. The Converse Sixty have been having Mr. Fender over the past year or so have Mr. Fender's plans to pave Lewis Neck Road to width of 16 feet with what his neighbors contributing both portions of their yards and funds to pay for the paving and the drainage. But even under these upgrades, Lewis Neck won't meet the standards for a roadway in Falmouth. It'll be more akin to a common driveway. It is by all accounts a paved cart path since Lewis Neck Road wasn't laid out as a subdivision. The paved way will improve conditions for the current residents of the one affordable unit to be built by Falmouth Housing Trust, Mr. Fender's new house and a second one he hopes to build if the board is to grant his determination of access at this point. The requirements for the determination of access are a policy matter for the board where they have considerable discretion. Now, this was in order to comply with the determination of access policy, which calls out for a 24 foot wide roadway. A road right away. If it was zoning, you'd have to go to the ZBA for relief. If it was a subdivision regulation, the board could waive the reg if there was some compelling public purpose. But as a policy, the board has a broad discretion to implement or not implement any portion of policy. At this point, I said, we're opening this discussion on 10/13 and I expect that the firmation will take a couple of meetings. As just late last week, we received the drainage calculations to ensure that when the improvements are made, that we know where the water is going. It's not going to wash out the neighbors on either side of the way. The way itself will be super elevated to push water from the Carroll Avenue side of the property over to the newest next side of the property with the drainage structures that Mr. Borselli has designed and added. They're currently being reviewed by Falmouth Engineering. There's not an opportunity at this point to connect Carroll Ave to Lewis Neck Road without the resident of those 75 and 81 Carroll Avenue giving their permission for the entire length of Carroll Avenue to become a public, becoming a public way, which as we know is quite a haul and quite very long and consuming task. So while it's not being suggested, Mr. Fender's application could be part of that conversation. We do need to point it out because we've had these discussions in relationship to Crowell Road where there is potentially a second way out at some point in the future where the folks at 71 and 81 Carroll could give their permission to connect or Carroll Ave was to become a public way at some point in the future. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair. Mr. Borselli has drawn the plan and is here to describe what we've got in front of us, as is Mr. Fender, I believe.
Okay. Um. I think after Tom's description of it, because we are familiar with the site, I'm wondering if the board, it might be more expeditious if the board has any questions they wish to direct to Mike or to Mr. Fender. At this point, having looked at it, if not, not sure how we want to go on this, what direction we want to go. Nice to have you join us, Mr. Fender. Is there anybody on the board that has any specific queries at this point that either Mike or Mr. Fender can ask or answer? And Paul?
Mr. Borselli, you mentioned the improvements being made by Mr. Fender along this route. Are all the budding properties contributing to that improvement?
Yes, Mr. Fender has reached out to the property owners along Lewis Neck Road on the, I'm going to call it the Westerly side. Those are the folks that have driveway access to it. The folks on the Eastery side have access off of, I think it's Caroline Way, if I'm saying that right. Tom can correct me. So the folks on the west side from where Irene Avenue ends and Lewis Neck starts all along Lewis Neck down to the end where Mr. Fender recently received your endorsement as an approval not required plan. All those folks have indicated they'll contribute to the cost and benefit from the improvement.
Does that include Falmouth Housing Trust property next door?
I am, that's the only one I'm not sure of. I don't know the answer.
Thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Fender for making improvements and being the leader to make the improvements that benefit everybody on that road. I wonder, Mr. Fender, if either you or Mike Borselli could make the argument for why we should approve this still substandard road.
I'm happy to start and maybe Bill can fill in any holes I leave.
Great. Thank you.
We, we intend to fill a lot of holes on Lewis Neck Road, but so with your permission, Madam Chair Preston, I'd like to share my screen just to show you the plan briefly to help my argument.
And while Mike is bringing it up, we've got a few chats that have come in. I'll be addressing those in
I saw that, Tom. Thank you.
So hopefully you're seeing my plan.
Yes.
And I'm gonna take you through it. You can see Irene Avenue on the far right side of the plan. And you will notice as you go through from Irene and make your way in a Westerly direction, the, there is then a a left hand turn that follows along. From Irene here follows along and it's in red. That represents the improvement. So if you've been on this current road, you probably have noticed a lot of potholes, a narrowness, difficulty for two cars to pass. Even though there've been some improvements by Mr. Fender already that Tom alluded to, and that being the removal of some of the trees and vegetation on the shoulders. So the conditions now are very substandard and what Mr. Fender is, hopefully you'll approve is a significant improvement from the dirt road narrow 12 foot plus or minus with some cleared shoulders to an overall paved width of 16 feet. I have a cross section of that. If you look at this drawing, on the bottom, yeah, you will see that the proposed cross section is 16 feet wide from the shoulder edge to the back of berm edge. And the berm itself is 1 foot wide. So there's actually a 15 foot wide paved travel surface with a slight elevated berm here, which is passable by emergency vehicle. This, if you look at it, is pitched in this direction so that the runoff goes into this gutter on this edge and then it's collected into drains. So there are no drains at all now. There's a, you know, times where the road has large puddles and it's not, it's passable, but not conveniently passable. It's dirt and pothole. So the neighbors are constantly, you know, running their vehicles over it. If there's a call for an ambulance, it's a little difficult as compared to how it would be if it's improved to gain access to the individual homes. The width of the pavement combined with the cleared shoulders make the overall width adequate for fire apparatus and other emergency vehicles to gain access. So from my point of view, is a significant improvement to access to the properties in particular for emergency access and safety as compared to today. Not to mention just the overall convenience of the residents who will you know, have the benefit of the improved road.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else on the board who wishes to ask questions? Remember, I can't see you, so. You're going to have to speak up if you have questions. Jim?
I think it'd be a good time for Tom to address the three chats that they're in regarding this from neighbors.
Well, I have a question first. I was following the rest of the board. Actually, it really is all one question in a way, but a couple of things folded in together. If we approve of this, you say there will be shoulders on either side, one foot shoulders on either side that would comprise the 18 feet that are needed by the fire department. And also need a 13 foot height clearance. Who would be responsible for the upkeep of this and say the clearing out of the catch basins? Will there be a homeowners association or how will this be taken care of in the future? Because all of this would be necessary. And I would address that to either Mike or Mr. Fender, whoever.
Yes, Mr. Fender should answer that one.
Okay.
Do it. Okay. The homeowners have got together and they have talked about trying to set up where they would each, each owner would put in a little money each year, like a hundred bucks to start with or something. And to take care of the road. At this point, or before I even started, before I bought the property there, they had to kick in money all the time because they constantly had to fix the road so they could even pass if they, so they could even use it. It'd get so muddy and stuff. So yes, there has been conversations that the neighbors wanted to get together. I've had a lot of, I've had a lot of talk with some of them, some not as many, not as much. But they do the general opinion of everybody that lives there, they want to be able to take care of the road. And they want everybody to kick in a little bit to do that after it's, after it's done. And they're all looking forward and hoping that this can happen.
So essentially there would be a formation of a Lewis Neck Road Homeowners Association. Essentially, that's what you're saying. Because somebody is going to have to receive those funds and disperse those funds, so. Have you had conversation with anybody?
I only heard part of that, but.
Okay. What I think you're essentially saying is that there would be the formation of a Lewis Neck Road Homeowners Association. Because somebody will have to be responsible for receiving those funds and determining how they're going to be used.
Well, like I said, they've already been working together for many years just putting more dirt in, putting more dirt in so they can use the road. So once it's paved, I don't think they're going to have to contribute as much as they had to before. So I think it's going to be much easier for them after it's paved. And if, if things get, the maintenance on the road shouldn't be very that much for the short run anyway. And, and as time goes on, I think they, they want to work together to have, have the road. It's, you know, I've got the opinion from just about all of them and they're very interested in doing this.
Okay, Charlotte.
There's only, there's only about seven houses there that we're talking about. There's not 30 houses or 40 houses. It's, it's, you know, they've been using that dirt road that's 10, 12 feet wide for many, many, many years. And, and, and to go to 16 feet with it cleared to 18 is a huge improvement, huge. And they're very interested in doing this.
Okay, great. Charlotte, you had a question. Then we'll go to Pam.
Not a question, it's an observation. He has not said that there would be a homeowners association in any kind of formal way. He's just said that there's a past practice of getting together occasionally to make an improvement, but the improvements didn't add up to making the road acceptable. So I don't think we should regard it as having a formal homeowner's responsibility for clearing out those drains.
No, I know that. That's why I asked the question, Charlotte, how it's going to be taken care of into the future. And Pam?
So I have a couple of questions. Is this a private road or a public road?
Private.
It's a private road. So you, who takes responsibility for having the road plowed and kept clear?
The, the, the town has been doing it. And to be honest with you, when they did do it, they did a lot of damage to the road every year because they dug up all the dirt. But so if the town was doing it when it was a dirt road, I would think they wouldn't mind doing it when it's paved, just my opinion.
Well, that may not be an accurate assumption because most private roads, there is an association and the folks that live along private roads usually end up paying for whatever the cost is to have the roads plowed. So my question is, when this is completed, or my suggestion would be that there is a fund. And if it's a hundred dollars a year or $75 a year, I think you have to make sure there's enough money to keep it clear as a private road.
I, I think that, I think that can be done. I mean, it's to their benefit when it snows out that they be able to get out.
Right. Well, and that emergency vehicles be able to get in.
Exactly, exactly.
So I agree with Pat. There should be some association set up that's responsible because all you need are a couple of people that say, ah, it's okay. I don't need to put anything into this. But I think you should assess everyone that benefits from it, some amount of money to make sure it's kept up.
I come from this from, we've got a road of safety. There I come from this from we've got a road association here for the very same reason. And we do a certain amount every year for keeping it clear, brush 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 back. So I'm talking from my own personal knowledge that an association does work better than, well, we'll just kind of throw money in here and there as we need it. So just I just find what the plans were. And right now, there are no plans. That's the definition, except to.
That's what it sounds like.
Okay, now, we have now a total of thirteen chats and Tom was going to get into that.
Yes, ma'am.
And most of them are comments, I think, Tom, rather than questions?
Well, there uh we'll 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 go through them. I'll curate them uh best I can. So Diane Gooood, uh who lives on Carol Ave uh ask, I'm curious how someone can petition to do work on land owned by others. In a related question, Mr. Baumann, who lives on Lewis Neck, says, have the property owners on Carol Ave given their blessing for the portion of Lewis Neck Road that they own? Uh Ms. Gooood points out that no one has ever contacted us on Carol Ave. So in the determination of access, the planning board sets the requirements for what would have to be done. You would have to pave the road to sixteen feet. You'd have to put this drainage in. That drainage would have to work. As far as actually doing that work, the applicant, Mr. Fender, would have to make sure he has permission to work on those people's property. Now, I know he's talked to most of the folks along uh Lewis Neck Road. Uh while the edge of the pavement, while the edge of the road isn't being touched on the Carol Avenue sign, uh all the improvements will be on the Lewis Neck side of the road. There's still places where Lewis Neck travels onto those folks' property and they'll have to get permission in order to uh to make those improvements, even if they are for the better. Uh so in a reply from uh Karen Bissonette uh in conversation with Mr. Fender, Falmouth Housing has agreed to help with the cost of the road. Um so let me go through here. Uh uh Frank, who lives on the road as well, Frank, uh last name starts with a K. It'll come to me. Frank, I'm sure will fill me in. Uh he supports the improvements, Mr. Fender, this plan. Uh he lives on the road. Uh the next is Kathleen and Bernard uh Mayor and Bernard McDade, who said, uh on fifty-one Lewis Neck Road, we've not talked about future costs of the road. Uh there's a discussion about creating a private homeowners association, but it's talked about. That has not been done at this point. Um Mr. Baumann points out that residents have uh contributed, uh excuse me a second, just scroll past that. Um Mr. Baumann points out, uh residents have contributed in the past to have the road graded. Funds for the paving project have been given directly to Mr. Fender. Uh Yes, we filled holes and we made grades on our on our own in the past. Uh Yeah, it appears as though I've hit them all, but I I seem to be in kind of a scroll here, right? Keep scrolling back to things I've already read, so it's gonna go down more time. Um So that is the nature of this, you know, first discussion is what are those improvements that the planning board would be comfortable with? Uh and if those improvements are are approved by the planning board, then it would be Mr. Fender's responsibility to install those per the plan or prior to getting any more building permits on Lewis Neck Road. So while the the uh process for the determination of access is to send out notices to folks who are on the way, uh I guess that in considered that 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 policy that there would be both people living on both sides of the way by that name. In this case, the folks who live on the other side of Lewis Neck Road on Carol Ave may not have been in that a butter notification. We'll have to go back and take a look. Uh but either way, uh we've still got some work to do to figure out exactly what's going to be done, where it's going to be done at. Uh and then it's up to Mr. Fender to, you know, get permission from those folks. I'd say he's been working with the folks on Lewis Neck Road. Uh and talk to the folks where there's any encroachments onto someone's property uh on the Carol Road side from uh from Lewis Neck as shown on the plan.
Okay, does the board have any other comments or questions? Okay, so there is, yes, Mr. Fender.
Yep, I I'd be more than happy to try to get the neighbors together to to start working on this association. They had conversations about it when we had a neighborhood, like a neighborhood meeting. They brought it up and I thought it was a good idea then, and I think it's a good idea now. So I really can start to talk with more of them about actually doing it.
Yeah, I think that would be advisable. We just had another couple of comments in, Tom?
Uh yes, those are just some clarifications. Uh I'm responding, but I'm not expressing, but uh but I am responding, but you're not expressing my thoughts, says Frank to all panelists. We've done so informally in the past, but it's gotten much worse in recent days. Uh and then, Mr. Baumann, I will ask the board code two. I'm sure that's a, I will ask the board to consider the safety of a narrow paved road. There have been some serious issues with cars speeding along here. Uh so once again, the 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 gist for tonight is to get those comments, to get these things in front of the board, uh understand concerns of the neighborhood and see what we can do to but to address them.
Okay, so I think, yeah, I guess.
I I have a question for Tom. I don't know how long that road has been there, but it seems to me there's some sort of provision that uh a way that has been used by the public over some period of time, the uh becomes a public way, that the the property owners have in effect ceded their control over it. So as I look at the the map um of where the people on Carol Ave's property lines um cross over and at times include almost all of of the road, um have they lost their rights to that land because they've allowed uh its use over many years? And also, what is the period of time that that accomplishes that?
I'm not an attorney, but I will tell you that a uh a prescriptive easement occurs when someone openly and notoriously keeps the piece of property for twenty years. Now, that doesn't mean that that property is yours and you get to do whatever you want with it. You essentially continue to do what you did before as in pass and repass over the property. To what extent can you make improvements on that property that you may or may not have a prescriptive easement for is not something I'm uh prepared to answer. But typically, it's you get to use it, but you don't, it's not yours.
Okay, uh Jim?
Um I'm not an attorney either, but from my experience, those prescriptive easements easements don't happen until someone goes to court and gets it enforced. It is a possibility of having it, but just because someone's gone over it back and forth, they've got to go in front of a judge and prove that they've been, I I mean, they've had it on my own property. It has to be proved. So it it's a possibility. It the easements don't exist until they get created in court.
Absolutely.
And correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't that go to land court?
Court, land court somewhere.
Yeah, isn't that a land court issue?
I don't know. Uh it goes to court. It's court. That's where my expertise ends.
So it appears from the comments and from the process that we're entering on to into here that people on the road believed it to be a private cartway and the whole process of creating a an appropriately wide roadway, even though it's not up to standards, and paving it may be changing the cartway designation. That's what I'm getting from some comments. Does anybody else seeing and hearing that? Yes, John?
I think it's called Carol Ave and not um a cartway. And I think that the I think that this board could approve this with a condition of an association with some annual dues.
Look, what I understood is they were referring to Lewis Neck.
I'm sorry. I meant to say Lewis Neck, yes.
And so you're saying that the planning board could help me to understand what you just said, John, that we could approve it?
We could approve this application with the condition that they form an association that contributes annual dues to keep the the road in the proper condition that Mr. Fender's gonna leave it in.
Okay. All right, I, yes, Paul? Take yourself off mute, Paul. Thank you.
I understand what Mr. Borselli said about the roadway on the east side is follow the property line. On the west side, each of the seven property owners are going to have agreed to provide access for roadway and clearing of trees. And I'm just curious whether that should be formalized into some kind of an agreement, if there is some kind of an association done at the same time.
That's again a legal issue that Mr. Fender, Mr. Borselli and the property owners would have to look into, I think.
I don't mean to be overly corrective, but Paul's statement that follows the property line, you really need to look at the plan. It it meanders back and forth over all the different properties and it doesn't follow the property line. Show show the plan if you could. In fact, at some places, it's entirely on uh the Lewis Neck's property and not even not even where the right of way is shown. It it goes all over the place.
I'd like to see that corrected as well.
By what corrected? The meandering?
Yeah, if there was some way during this construction or wherever they're gonna be doing, that they try to make this more uniform so that there's an equal amount of property on each side of this road.
Well,
Madam Chair Preston, if I could speak to that? I I think that's virtually impossible, given the nature of the the meandering nature of the road. It's been this way for decades, if not longer, um many, many decades. And it would be a huge undertaking to try to get it to even out. It's been this way. Um people are accustomed to it. Um there's an expectation that it's being used this way. Um all that's gonna all that's going to happen that is an improvement is it'll be paved and widened on the westerly side towards all of the neighbors who uh really benefit most from the road. And there'll be no further um encumbrance or encroachment on the neighbors on the east side. So to try to equal it out, um I I don't I don't know how we could ever do that.
And Tom, did you?
The short answer is you can't.
Right.
Thank you, Tom. That's very concise.
And that's where the difference between subdivisions and things that don't already have existing structures and properties on them are much easier to deal with than something like this. Uh this is a highly unique situation.
John?
I just hate the I the idea of overcomplicating this and losing the opportunity to take a really horrible situation and have private citizens invest their money and make it into a very good situation. Good be being for the people that live there and also for the safety of the people that live there, fire department, ambulance. Paving that would be and having drainage would be huge. And I would hate to lose that opportunity for a couple of decades.
John, I I do agree with your statement very much. It's a horrible situation as it was. Yes, Jim?
I also agree with John and I am in favor of it getting corrected. But what really concerns me is the precedent we're setting here and other people doing this. This is nowhere near our policy and we I was against this from the beginning. We we've now got it where Mr. Fender's invested a lot of money and making some huge improvements. But I'm really concerned that this is gonna be a new policy and that part scares the hell out of me.
Well, it's a policy. And when you have a policy, you can also give some leniency to certain situations of this nature where it is so bad that it's going to be made infinitely better.
Yeah, we, if I may, Madam Chair, yeah, we we don't we don't set precedent. Our policy is a twenty-four foot right of way. Uh and someone coming forward would have to hopefully have that minimum uh uh right of way to start with because of what the fire department's looking for for parents and things like that. But because this started uh prior to uh that policy, we're sort of in that having this unique situation is is the board going to uh to not follow their policy on Lewis Ave in order to pave the road. Uh so that's up to the board, but it won't set a precedent going into the future. Uh I think that what we've heard, and there's a couple of their comments that have come in, uh that it's uh important to uh first off, make sure that what is being designed uh isn't going to create any more issues with having the drainage reviewed. Uh and secondly, perhaps is having some conversations with the folks on Carol Avenue who are a bit of concerns. They uh uh their road is fine. They can drive up and down their road. They're just worried about what's gonna go on in their backyard, as most people would be. Uh so in those uh other uh comments on the board here, uh from Frank, I agree with Mr. Fender. I'm all for an HOA and so are several of our neighbors. Why would we not agree to maintain the road once it's paved? Uh the town has always told me it's a private cartway that we are on and Lewis Neck has main uh that we are up there. And we on Lewis Neck have maintained. No one on Carol Ave has contributed uh since I've been here since the nineteen seventy-sevens. Uh Carol has not contributed, I meant, he says. And then Mrs. Maher, who also lives on Lewis Neck Road, says, before this is approved, uh the property owners on Carol Avenue uh must be uh approvers. I'm assuming that means approvers, that they should get their permission. But keep in mind, the board will set conditions for what has to be done. But it's up to the applicant, Mr. Fender, to install it uh per the plan. And if it's on somebody else's property where those things are going at, even though we're making those improvements on the uh I've been calling it the north, but it's actually the 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 west side of the road. Uh when we look at paving that part of the road that goes on someone else's property, they'll have to make sure that that uh they they've gotten that permission from those folks uh in order to get that done.
Okay. And I believe there was another one that nobody's talked with people on Carol and Carol Ave, but that is going to take place, I understand. Charlotte?
This is, I think, there's Mrs. Gooood's comment very early on. No one's contacted us on Carol Ave.
And Charlotte?
I agree with John. Probably this will get approved. But I'm wondering, as long as Mr. Fender's going to, has gone so far to the expense of getting this uh drafted up and planned and organized with the neighbors to make it a fifteen foot wide uh paved road, why at the same time, as long as you're clearing along one side of the road, don't you clear enough to make it wider? Falmouth is filled with uh private roads that are are substandard. I live on one of them. And it's a seventeen foot wide road and I know that it's difficult for the neighbors going by one another. So I'm wondering why, as long as you're making an improvement on one side of the road, cutting back the trees and the brush, you don't just make it another three or four feet?
Um because when, Charlotte, when that was done, sixteen was the maximum that it could be done with a shoulder, a one foot shoulder on each side. And that, I believe, the fire department was out there too, if I'm recalling correctly. Is that correct, Tom?
Uh well, Mr. Gooood, uh Mr. Fender had been having a conversation with folks about making a sixteen foot wide roadway. That was his uh his conversation with those folks. The fire department need eighteen feet to clear. But the fact that you're working on a twelve foot road right of way means it's very difficult to do those things. And so there's gonna have to be additional easements uh on the on the west side of the property for those drainage structures for that pavement to go along there. Uh and to Mrs. Gooood's point, uh you're not addressing the issue of taking properties allowed by Carol Avenue residents. Uh I believe what I said was that uh the planning board might approve conditions for what has to be done. Uh but installing those conditions is the applicant's responsibility and making sure he has permission to work on those people's property.
Right. So I'm going to suggest now, since we've been on this for quite a long time, that we move on and this will come up again on what date?
Well, we have. Well, we have the drainage calculations in. We got them in last week. They are engineering. So we are meeting again on the 27th for our regular meeting. If, I would like to think that over those two weeks, we'd have that opportunity to get through the drainage calculations and make sure there's no, nothing that's going to create any other issues on that road. And give Mr. Fender a chance to chat up to neighbors about any of their concerns that they might have about some of the things we've been talking about.
Is this all right with both of you? Mr. Fender and Mike on the 27th?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Real quick question. I just want to ask all the other board members, do you guys know how to read the chats?
Yes.
Does everybody know?
No.
Okay, then you should learn because it would speed things up if everyone read the chats.
Well, if I may, Mr. Fox, the purpose of having the chats there is to have these people's voices heard in the meeting.
But what it says is they think they're communicating because they're saying to all panelists, which is, they think we're hearing them and we're not.
Which is why I read each one.
Well, it should be to you then. I believe the public thinks we're all hearing it and we're not. I think it's a perception what I'm talking about. I want this to happen, but we need to get, got to deal with this issue.
Yeah. So the last chat from Frank to all panelists, because unless you go in and you drill down and select whom you wish to chat to, they go to all the panelists. Frank says, we have a child on the road, which the bus has a hard time coming down to pick him up. The new people at number 63 have two children who will need to be picked up in the future. Keep in mind, paving shut down for the year. So this is just the difficulty of doing business in the age of COVID, where we have to have the public an opportunity to participate in the meetings. And this is the path that we've taken. So cumbersome as it is, we will continue to read all the chats out loud. The board members can read them privately as well, but they have to be spoken during the meeting because that's the process for having a public meeting in the age of COVID.
It has to be because FCTV is televising it too, so that people can watch and listen to this. So it has to be read, I think, no matter whether we look at it or not. Anyway, we've got to move on, and thank you both for attending and participating.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Next on our board, planning board, on our agenda is the planning board decision. The applicant is Theophilus Moniz III, site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment located at 93 Old Main Road. And we have a draft decision before us. Who can I get to read it? Bob, you've got a wonderful voice. You gonna read it?
Yep, I'll read it. Okay, we ready?
Yep.
Okay, October 13th, 2020, draft motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Theophilus Moniz III for the construction of a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit within an attached garage located at 93 Old Main Road under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw for a plan entitled Locus Plan Scale 1" = 40ft, along with exterior elevations and floor plans entitled Moniz Edition Remodel 93 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, Mass., prepared by TMS Design, dated August 8, 2001, Scale 1/4" = 1ft, along with photos of the residence with the following. Just a correction there, it says 1" = 40. It should have the foot indication on that too. Findings. The applicant, Theophilus Moniz III, seeks to construct a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit within an attached garage located at 93 Old Main Road. Apostle Zone Residence B, R.B., and located in the Fiddler Cove, Costa Pondo Lay, and contains 43,486 square feet of land. Proposed accessory dwelling unit within the attached garage is approximately 746 square feet. Currently, all 746 square feet of the proposed accessory apartment exist, and the applicant is proposing to convert the in-law apartment with kitchen, living room, and bath into an official permitted accessory dwelling unit above the garage with an exterior entrance set of stairs in the rear of the house. The primary residence is approximately 2,058 square feet and currently contains four bedrooms with one of the existing bedrooms to become the bedroom in the accessory dwelling unit. Therefore, the primary residence will become a three-bedroom, and the overall bedroom count will stay the same for the property. The proposed percentage of total floor area of the accessory apartment is 36.25%, of the total finished floor area of the principal structure. The applicant's intention is directed to the Board of Health referral dated August 14, 2020, which indicates the existing septic is fine for four bedrooms on the lot. Therefore, the septic system does not need to be upgraded. The planning board's review does not include building code review, and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code. The planning board considered the above referenced referrals and the applicant's response in this matter. The board will condition its decision accordingly. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240-3.1 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions. One, that the plan be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 241-83B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full apostle occupancy shall be viewed until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months and every calendar year, or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commission assigned by the property owner, attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both during the five months the owner occupant may be absent. Rental period shall be no less than six months, and weekly, monthly rental, summer rental, so-called, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, the applicant shall post the address for this residence, 93A Old Main Road, for Section 99.1. A fixing of legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. Five, it is the applicant's responsibility to notify the post office and utilities of the address. We have notified the town and state agencies. Both of these addresses, both of these addresses should be posted in a location at the access point to the units and per the sketch submitted by engineering.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion of the motion? Jim?
Can we see an elevation of the property?
We did, I thought.
Not tonight. I mean, it's a public hearing, the public.
No, it's a decision.
It's a decision?
Correct.
I don't remember what it looks like, so I'll be voting blind, but what the heck?
Any other comments or questions on this? Charlotte? You're muted, Charlotte.
Jim, the interesting thing about it is it doesn't change the appearance of the building. It's already there.
Can we see it?
You can drive by it and see it.
I'm sure it could be put up if Tom wanted to do it.
That's the doing work we've all done.
Let's stop. It's a decision.
It's a public, okay, fine, we don't have to show it. I always have insisted we show elevations. I've done it all the time. There's no reason why we don't have to do it, but Pat, you can do what you want.
Jim, we did this during the public hearing. So people saw the elevations, they saw the plot plan, they saw all that. We voted on it to make a positive motion, and we're just voting on the motion. So as far as having people see it, it's been seen.
You spent more time telling me no than putting it up. I'll go along with you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay. Jim?
I'm not going to vote on something I don't remember.
All right, so you're abstaining.
Abstaining.
Okay. So six in favor, one abstaining. All right. The next one, the applicant is Cove Cottage LLC and 108 Seapit Road LLC, special permit application to adjust bundles of existing developed lots to create conforming frontage and septic system location outside of Wetlands Buffer, a portion of the new lot being only 40 feet wide, located at 108 Seapit Road, map number 3221004023 and 3221005026, Holmes and McGrath. And we have a motion here. Charlotte, did you want to read this one maybe?
I'd be glad to read it, but I wonder if you would mind if I abbreviated it, as we once agreed we would. There's a very extensive numerical description of the property that we're all familiar with. I think we should have the entire decision as written entered into the record, but we don't need to read it all.
Yeah, I kind of disagree with you on that one because we have specific findings.
Well, I would read some of that.
Okay.
Let me give it a shot. The motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Cove Cottage LLC and 108 Seapit Road LLC under Article 14 Dimensional Regulations and grant a special permit pursuant to Section 240-67D of the zoning bylaws to allow a lot to be created with less than 80% of the required lot width at the parcel located at 108 Seapit Road, Falmouth. And then the rest is describing where this can be found on different maps. The findings. The applicant, Cove Cottage LLC and 108 Seapit Road LLC, is applying to the planning board for a special permit under Section 240-67D for reduced lot width. The applicant is proposing to re-divide three lots as allowed by right under zoning bylaw Section 24066A. The new lot for 108 Seapit Road will have 100 feet of frontage on Reed Path and 40 feet of frontage on Seapit Road, and there will be sufficient area of land along Reed Path for the installation of a Title V septic system more than 100 feet from Wetland. The strip of land 40 feet wide along Reed Path can be allowed by a planning board special permit under Section 240-67D. A special permit granting authority shall grant a special permit only upon its written determination that the proposed use will not have an adverse effect which overbalances its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. Findings specific to it. The planning board may by special permit, and it goes on to repeat what was just said, and may not create a lot under this section with less than 80% of the required lot width. However, it had the plan determined, specific to 240-216 of the zoning bylaw, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use, suitability of the site for the proposed use, impact on traffic flow and safety, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas, adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, adequacy of utilities and other public services, the effect of the proposed project on the adequacy of the supply of affordable housing in the town. Therefore, given the above and the conditions to be imposed below, the planning board finds the application special permit proposal to reduce the minimum with, of the lot will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, and the proposal will not have adverse effects which overbalances beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. It has seven conditions, and they're quite standard. The plan will be constructed as approved with the normal language for that pursuant to Section 240-221 of the zoning bylaw. This special permit will lapse three years from the date it is granted if a substantial use thereof is not sooner commenced, except for good cause. The applicant will receive final approval by engineering prior to the start of construction. The applicant will install a denitrification septic system at 108 Seapit Road. The applicant will install a sign to be posted at the intersection of shared Reed Path driveway and Seapit Road, indicating houses 98 to 1 through 110 are accessed from this driveway. The applicant will change the address, 24 Reed Path to 98 Seapit Road, and will contact DPW Engineering Division for the address correction. Finally, each property owner shall provide a revised water service location plan to the Water Department for review, including a copy of any easements necessary for a service to cross an adjacent lot.
Tom received a communication from Attorney Ahmet. Tom?
Is that in the chat room?
I don't know if it is or not.
All right, well, let me get to, let me get to the first thing we have to do. So we did get the draft decision out. Oftentimes, someone will ask if they can see the decision beforehand, and we share, and we did. In this case, Attorney Ahmet had some comments that came back this afternoon. So in those conditions, there are three things that have changed slightly. Condition number three, the applicant will receive final approval by engineering prior to starting construction. To Mr. Ahmet's point, there really isn't any approval by engineering for the septic systems being installed or the house. So it's perfectly reasonable to remove condition number three per Bob Ahmet's suggestion. The other two, very minor changes in condition four, rather than the applicant will, it says the applicant shall install a denitrification system, septic system at 108 Seapit Road. And in condition number five, instead of the applicant will, it is the applicant shall install a sign to be posted in the intersection of the shared Reed Path driveway and Seapit Road, indicating houses 98 through 110 are accessed from this driveway. The reason for those is will is usually applied to be permissive. You could do that, but a shall is not an option. So with the board's active essence, we would strike condition number three regarding engineering review and change those two wills in condition fours and fives to shall. And now let me get to Mr. Ahmet's chat.
We don't have a second yet, so it's up to Charlotte to accept those changes.
Second. I accept the changes.
Accept the changes. And Pam?
Second.
Seconding it with the changes as Charlotte has accepted them. Bob?
What about condition six, that also has a will? Should that be a shall?
Condition number six, the applicant will change the address and will contact, those certainly could be shals. They deal with the ways, so where if there's a will, there's a way, but you get away with that. We'll go with the applicant shall change, if you prefer.
That's fine. Okay. And you want to add something else, Tom?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. So it has been moved and seconded with the minor changes of the changing of the word will to shall and taking out condition number three, so they will all be renumbered. Are there any comments on this? Okay. May I have a show of hands, please, all in favor? Okay, all of us are in favor. Thank you. The next is a planning board discussion. The applicant is Gerson de Silva, site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment located at 11 Andy's Lane. And Michaela is going to take the lead on this, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Michaela.
Oh. All right, so do you give me just one moment? I will, I'll bring this up. So just to talk you guys through this one, this is an application for an accessory dwelling unit or an attached accessory dwelling. It is currently existing as a one-bedroom. The applicant is proposing to turn it into a two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The house is currently listed as a four-bedroom house. And we'll kind of go over the submitted plans and some of the revised plans that the applicant submitted. So let me share with you the application. So this is the exterior of the house, just to start with. So the accessory dwelling will be on the second floor. So this is where currently, this is the accessory dwelling, use it as it stands right now. So there's a bedroom, the kitchen, the living area. And this is, the applicant is proposing for the second floor to make it into a two-bedroom. And this is, the applicant is proposing for the second floor to make it into a two-bedroom with one of the bedrooms being here and one of the bedrooms being here. But what I would like to point the board to is that the size of the lot is under twenty thousand square feet, which unfortunately means based on the Falmouth bylaws that the lot can't have more than four bedrooms. The applicant's original plans showed for actually a seven-bedroom. The applicant has since submitted revised plans that have brought it down to a five-bedroom. And I'm going to show you the revised plans now that I don't believe are included in your packet. So part of the revision is that they will be removing a wall in the office space on the first floor, because an office space can be considered a bedroom as well. So this is the office space as it is on the original submitted proposed plans. They're going to be removing this wall. So this will no longer be deemed a bedroom. They have submitted new basement plans that show there is no bedroom in the basement. This is existing, and it no longer shows any bedroom in the basement. Bear with me just momentarily. I'm going to stop screen sharing for just one second so I can bring up another plan that was submitted. Apology.
So if I can just intervene for a second while Michaela is pulling the plan up, one of the, she and I were actually having quite a discussion on our phones texting back and forth about bringing up other plans that weren't part of a hearing. And I told her, you know, we, there's enough things to bring up. Let's not bring up the plans from last time. So to Jim's point, is nobody was ignoring you. We're actually having a discussion about bringing plans up, but as you see, it's not exactly seamless to bring them right up, especially if you're not anticipating. So we heard you, but we're just managing the meeting best we can from, from afar. Thank you. Go ahead.
No, no, thank you. As you can see, we have some of the other plans. It just, it does take a minute. So this is the existing and the proposed basement that the applicant submitted just at the end of last week. So as you can see, the unfinished basement no longer has a bedroom with a bathroom listed on it at all. So these plans were sent to Health and Building just for a little bit of clarification. Understandably, they weren't able to give us an answer back this afternoon, but I did just want to make the board aware that these are new plans that were submitted. But even still, even taking the, the office out and the bedroom out of the basement, it still leaves the overall bedroom count for the property at five bedrooms, and the property is not allowed to have more than four bedrooms. So ultimately, that is something that should be discussed. So I'm going to stop sharing now, but I'm happy to share any plans that you guys need.
Well, I also, Michaela, have a question with the form that was filled out because it says building footprint, square feet, one thousand six hundred and forty-one existing proposed, first floor, one thousand six hundred and twenty-one, second floor, one thousand six hundred and sixty. So it's over thirty-two hundred square feet, thirty-three hundred square feet between the upstairs and the downstairs. And I don't know whether this is correct or not, particularly when they have the second floor of square footage being more than the first floor of square footage.
Yeah, absolutely. There's, there was some questioning with the square footage. You know, I calculated it using the Falmouth bylaws, but ultimately, the bedroom count needs to be fixed first, kind of foremost. But using the Falmouth bylaws, it was calculated, the square footage of the primary residence was calculated at two thousand six hundred and seventy-four square feet.
Okay. The other thing on the form that was filled out is the property located in a Water Resource Protection District. Both yes and no are checked.
Right. The property is located in the Water Resource Protection District.
Yeah, I know it is, but it's got both yes and no checks. So the form itself is not well filled out. And it kind of also, I can't tell, but it looks like they're already building and they're coming to us after the fact. Is that correct?
Yes, so the, the apartment does exist. It's a, it currently exists as a one-bedroom. You can see that in the plans. So my understanding is that they are doing some construction right now on the property and that they're just trying to expand it and legalize it.
That's what I was thinking. I don't know. Does anybody else on the board have any comments they want to make on this? Jim?
I, have they submitted a proposed elevation? I saw pictures of a building without any shingles and blue tops on it. Is that what we're approving?
That is the structure under consideration, yes.
It's not worthy to be shown to at this time?
Jim, I apologize, my Adobe just shut down. I'm happy to share it spinning, but I don't think anyone wants to see a spinning Adobe.
Well, I saw it. I'm just wondering if other people have seen it. Where, where, has everyone seen the elevation? Do you know?
Let me bring the plans up on my side over here.
They were in the packet that we were sent.
Well, there's also a problem with the septic system, if you've read that, on the Health Department referral to us.
Pat, while we're waiting?
Yes, Charlotte.
Um, I have a question to ask, actually of the, the Planning Department. This application really isn't in very good order. It doesn't match the bylaw. There are corrections that need to be made on filling in the form and getting accurate information. There's an issue about they've gone ahead and started building. I wonder if they have a building permit, they're following, apparently following the plans that we were sent, but who knows? It looks like they're trying to put up a dormitory building, and I wonder if anyone's been over to look and see if they're actually removing the walls they're talking about. I don't think this is really ready for the planning board to even consider approving it myself.
I'm on board with you, Charlotte. When I took a look at this, I thought, oh, no, this is just, it's got too many holes in it, including, I don't know what they're going to do with their septic system because it had to be replaced. They had a two-year window and it had to be replaced this month.
There have been a, a number of issues with this as we've been dealing with, Michaela's been dealing with. The most, the principal one being that because it's in the Water Resource District and because of the size of the lot, you can't get more than four bedrooms on the site. And how do you get from what they have to four bedrooms and ensure that it remains four bedrooms at some point in the future? I noted in the applicant in the chat room, there doesn't appear to be anyone here representing the advisor either or the applicant either. So this is, as I said, try to put these things together so your homeowner can do it without having to hire. But this hasn't, hasn't had a good start, and we certainly need some more work done from them before we get to that point of moving the project.
Well, the other question I have too is the owner has to live there for seven months of the year, and the owner is now living in Edgartown. Was this bought as a, as an investment property with the intent of renting both? Or is the owner planning to move from Edgartown to here?
When I spoke to the owner on the phone the other day, it was my understanding that they wanted to, to move, but I can, I didn't directly ask that question, so I don't want to presume. I can, I can certainly ask.
Okay. Bob, you had something?
Yeah, I, I think we need to push this back. When you get a set of drawings that show existing, like in, in the basement where it shows a bathroom and all these other rooms, and then Michaela brings up another existing drawing of what's there, I have no idea what's there. You know, which, which one is actually correct? So I want to see something that's much clearer. The application, as everyone's mentioned, has some serious holes in it that need to be filled. I think we push this back and make them come back.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and while we typically don't, well, I do site visits on a pretty regular basis. I don't go into someone's home who's doing an accessory housing unit, but this might be one of those things where we get somebody from code enforcement and go over there with an appointment to, to take a look around. Because when you start with an existing structure, existing conditions, and then as Bob pointed out, the second plan comes back to existing structures, and it looks amazingly like the, the graphic right next to it. There, there seems to be some things that need to be verified on the site, but the hardest part of this whole thing is going to be getting the size of the structure and what's there down to four bedrooms, because they can't accommodate anymore with the size of the water resource district.
Right. Charlotte?
Well, we're sending it back. I'd like to make another comment about the quality of the, the floor plans. Very poor, very difficult to read, lots of extraneous information in them so that what you need to see isn't clear. So when it returns to us, they should be, the floor plan should be much clearer on what is there and what do they propose to do.
Agreed.
I think our judgment on this is it's not ready for primetime yet.
You just took the words out of my mouth. Definitely not. It's not even ready for pre-primetime.
Right. Okay, so we will move on on this.
Paul?
Paul, yes?
I'd just like to add a comment. When I was over there looking at the property earlier today, inside of the building, there was just a structure frame there with no walls or anything. It looked like they started to do the work and stopped. The roof is plastic on it to keep it from leaking, and it's in very poor condition at the present time. So I don't know how quickly they're going to move forward, but there was a sign on the front door saying, from the, saying we stepped into a cell.
Yeah. And they were given until this month to replace it. They have a two-year window to replace it after failure. So there are a lot of problems with this property. I don't think we should even be asked to look at it until way in the future, I think.
Agreed.
Okay.
All right. If we, if we may set a date for that, can we plug this in for our November tenth meeting? That's a month from now and see what sort of progress they've made, and if necessary, we'll just continue it beyond November tenth.
What does the board feel? Jim?
I don't think they should be put on the schedule until they have corrected some of the deficiencies. They're not ready. I don't want to just keep them bringing back. If they show everything fixed, then yes, but that'll be our staff's judgment that it's ready for primetime if they bring it forward. They need to make that call.
Right. I have total agreement with Jim on this. Pam?
Do you know if they've made an application for their septic? I mean, has there been any movement on that? You said they had until this month.
Yeah, the health referral stated they had until this month. Health Department didn't say whether they had applied or, or where it, it was, that just that they had until this month to get a working septic in.
Obviously, that hasn't happened.
And it won't by the end of the month. So I don't think we should even put it on the schedule and even be looking at it because it'll be coming in and spending more of our time when it doesn't even have the basic qualities yet that we should be looking at, I believe.
I agree. They've, they've heard our concerns, and it's up to them to address those concerns and reapply. And once they make the application, then we can consider putting them on the agenda.
Yep. Okay, so give them the bad news, please, folks. Okay? Thank you. We have future agendas for pending applications, and Tom, you were going to go over that.
Yes, and I'm going to go find that because Melinda was kind enough to send it out earlier.
Come on. Okay, October twentieth, we have site plan bylaw and discussion with town council regarding zoning recodification. So that's the third meeting given to these larger issues. October twenty-seventh, at noon, we have a site visit at Rebecca Ann Lane for a referral to the ZBA or forty B out there. And that evening, October twenty-seventh, we have, what is it, Shoemaker, Schoonmaker? I don't know how it's pronounced, SPR, accessory apartment at twenty-eight Morris Pond Road, charter review, Woods Hole Partners request for administrative approval, and Blue Flag Auto Camp update. And then on November twenty, and November seventeenth, we have the zoning recodification hearing. I don't know if it's fair to assume, but probably it is fair to assume that we have not gotten any comments in on the rezoning codification at this point, to what it was sent to.
None that I have seen. So also on our October twentieth, our October twentieth meeting, discussion with town council. Okay, good, it does say recodification because we've got a few things to talk about with the recodification for our meeting on the twentieth.
But the major one is going to be a site plan bylaw, correct?
Um, I think we're probably going to spend an equal amount of time with that. We've also been talking about some committee reports. I know Paul Dryer has a number of committee reports he's been very eager to share with, with the group.
One at a time, a lot of them are very detailed.
Correct. So we are going to, with the board's, with the chairman's acquiescence, plug in a committee report from Paul at each of those next three meetings.
Okay. I've written it in. Yes, Paul?
At some point in time before the town meeting, we probably should discuss Article six upon town meeting about the cooperation between the local comprehensive plans and the strategic plan by the Board of Selectmen. We might want to put that on the agenda sometime before town meeting on the sixteenth of November.
According to the newspaper, Paul, there has been some kind of a change submitted by the Charter Review Committee that we haven't seen, a change in wording. Yes, Tom?
Those charter review changes are on the agenda for October twenty-seventh.
Okay. That's what I wondered if that's what it was.
That's correct.
Okay, Jim?
Didn't hear anything about the multifamily discussion. Is that on any future agenda?
I believe we're waiting to hear back from the multifamily bylaw committee to see where they're ready to bring their next product back.
John, are you there?
Yeah, John, I thought the committee has met, and we think that, we know that we are in agreement, and we thought that you would have received it by now, Tom and Pat, and then it could go to the whole board. Where, where is that?
Don't know.
I haven't seen it myself, Charlotte. I haven't seen what we talked about the other day. I have not seen an update on it myself.
I emailed it last, when were you here? Thursday, Thursday? I emailed it Thursday.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And did you get it?
I did not.
I didn't get anything if you emailed it to me.
No, you wouldn't have, no, I was just, I was just the typist and sending it to John and Jim.
Jim?
I've seen many versions of it. I believe it's ready for our discussion. It may need some tweaking, but I'd like to see a time set on a future agenda so we don't get closed out. It may need some tweaking, but I'd like to see a time set on the future agenda to, so we don't get closed out.
Could we have saying tonight, Jim, that there are things that you're still investigating?
With 98% there and it should be on a future agenda is what I'm saying.
I don't think we're inv- investigating anything. I think that we were ready to send it forward.
I agree, I agree, from what we, we did last week, yes.
Well, could we put it on for the 20th? Is that too much?
I think it's fine with me if it's fine with the chair. Uh, but
It's not too much.
Without a doubt, recodification has to be our priority at this meeting.
It does.
Four years, 200 pages of stuff, 257 town meeting members, a cast of reviewers and things like that. It has to be the primary focus for our meeting on the 20th.
I don't think it would be a problem because the board has already seen, um, everything except detailedy kind of things. And what we're trying to do as a subcommittee is move this beyond the board into scheduling public hearings so that we would stand some kind of a chance of getting multifamily, uh, bylaw or, or overlay to, uh, to town meeting in April.
I, I'm looking at this and it is too much for October 20th. So one thing's got to go by the wayside. We can, uh, check site plan bylaw if you want to. In favor of the multifamily bylaw.
That's the, that's fine with me and that's what the board wants to do, absolutely.
Jim and John, how do you feel about that?
I, I agree, yes, we should.
Should take out site plan bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. That's gone then. So we have discussion with town council in regard to the zoning recodification and we have the multifamily proposed bylaw.
And that is in a week.
Correct, and we have Paul's, one of Paul's reports. Some of them are quite lengthy. There's been a lot happening with the committees. He's been on, on behalf of the Planning Board. Okay?
Jim and John, I will resend that. It seems to have gotten at least partially lost along the way. And then, John, it would go, or do you want me to still send it to you, John? Or do you want it sent to Tom and Pat or what would you like?
All of the above.
Okay, great.
I would like to see it sent out so that the Planning Board has it before the meeting on the 20th so that we can act
Right.
Think about what you've done.
Yeah, I'd like to see it before the meeting.
So it could be emailed off. Because unlike these plans with all the big pictures and everything else that we can't see very well, we can certainly, um, look at a bylaw.
Yeah, please send that to me, Charlotte. Copy me when you send it out to the group and I'll get it to the board.
Terrific, okay.
Thank you.
And I, I feel more comfortable with it that way. The site plan bylaw, fine, it can, we'll take it up at our next third meeting of the month. Um, announcements, Pam, I've asked her about the Housing Summit, Pam?
So tomorrow evening from 6:30 to 8, we're going to have a live broadcast on FCTV Channel 15. And the topic is the Challenges of Affordable Housing and Social Justice, a virtual housing summit about community housing issues in Falmouth. Our speakers will be Peter Johnson Staub, our Assistant Town Manager, Laura Schufelt, who's the Acting Director at the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, Alyssa Magnata, who is the CEO of HAC, the Housing Assistance Corporation, and Senator Jamie Eldridge, who is a state senator for Middlesex and Worcester to talk about what's going on across the state in terms of affordable housing. Um, you can connect via Zoom to submit comments or questions during the live stream. And you can visit www.falmouthmass.us/ahc for more information. And so
Where is the Zoom link, Pam?
I'm sorry?
Where is the Zoom link?
That's what I just gave you, the www.falmouthmass.us/ahc as in Affordable Housing Committee. So people can submit questions and comments.
Paul?
Yeah, uh, Pam, I'm just a little curious. We have a housing coordinator with, uh, on board here and I'm curious why she is not part of the participants listed on that summit.
So, um, Carla asked not to be part of this. She was on the, she was the moderator last time. And she will be, I think she's going to be available, but she's not one of our four speakers. It was her, her choice.
Okay. Are there any other announcements tonight? Okay? And we went over all the future agenda items that we know about. Is there anybody here who would like to see other agenda items added? Jim?
I would like to, uh, keep Davis Straits in our vision. We've seemed to have let that one go.
If I may?
Yep.
Because it's not being discussed at a Planning Board meeting does not mean it's going to let away or gone away. We are working on Davis Straits on a regular basis, on a regular basis, not at every Planning Board meeting.
How about an update? Cause I haven't heard anything about it in months.
We can have an update at some point when Tom feels he's got enough to update us with. And that depends upon the consultants, I believe. Um, I skipped over general correspondence because I had asked Tom. He said he's not aware of any correspondence that we've had. Our next meeting, as you know, we went over is October 20th. Okay, and the October 27th has some charter changes on it. That, the charter change discussion and there are other things on it, but it's put in here as charter changes. Does anybody else have anything else, any questions? Any comments? We are adjourned, 8:05.
Good going, Pat.
Thank you.
All done, good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.